Good morning. The October 12, 2021 Budget Update Workshop is now in session. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Ms. McDougal.
Present.
Mrs. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell.
Present.
Please stand for the pleasurable legion.
Pleasurable legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Chief Financial Officer Cindy Lesinski will be providing the information for today's workshop. Ms. Lesinski.
Just so, Madam Chair, I'm going to join the team down at the floor. Just didn't want the board to think I was leaving.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Mullins. We're going to go through an update today and go through the first slide. You know, we use the, in order, we use these four priorities in order to make resource decisions. And first and foremost is the excellent education for all of our students. And the next thing that we do is we need to protect and affect the workforce. And this includes, you know, the teachers and the staff that are able to, that believe in all of our students and that work with them and they meet them where they are, they reach them in their heart, and they're able to teach them and they can learn and grow and instill that every student can meet any standard. The next is the financial strength of the district. We have to be able to show resiliency with our funding and we need to be able to demonstrate that we can match our revenues with our expenses. And then we also need to protect our taxpayer interests. We should be spending every dollar very seriously, just as seriously as the taxpayers who earn those dollars. And Dr. Mullins is going to, we're going to tag team on a couple of these slides and Dr. Mullins is going to take over on this slide?
Good morning, Board members. I want to take you through kind of a look back of where we've been as a district, some of the financial decisions that we've made in the past to leverage dollars to meet our priorities moving forward. So I'll begin with a slide that likely looks familiar. This is our historical budget reduction summary slide. You've seen it over the last couple of years. But I think it's worthy that we've added the budget reduction items that are applicable to this school year, going into this school year. But I want to highlight a couple of things. The first column you see there, transfer or transfers, those are formally operational expenses that were allowable transfers to the capital budget. As property values have returned to more robust levels and as we've been the benefactor of a growing community, our capital budget has grown some and we've been able to, with the board's approval in the past, transfer some expenses that were previously in the operating budget over to the capital budget. Obviously, that is dictated and guided by statute what can be expended out of the capital budget. These expenditures meet those requirements. The reason I highlight that is I'm, it has been asked, do we have more expenditures in the operating budget that can be transferred over to the capital budget? And I will tell you that the staff is probably tired of me asking and say, go back and look at it again and make sure. And they came back, the last time I said, we have looked, we have dug, and so on. We, I believe we're actually exploring one more small possibility in educational technology, just to make sure that we are leveraging all of our dollars to the best benefit of the organization. But by and large, those two considerable transfers pretty much tap out those opportunities. But I wanted the board to be aware that we continue to look at it and analyze that opportunity. But those, any potential is diminished. The second column, personnel and staffing. The reality is, is that budget reductions or budget cuts come with a cost. Because these are previously funded priorities or previously funded line items that have to continue to be fulfilled or met by the district. And it seems notable that as we have over $18 million of essentially personnel or staffing reductions over the last five or six years, we are beginning to experience the cost. So when our community or even our own staff suggests that...
I apologize, Dr. Mullins.
That's okay, no problem. Well, that's my point. Sometimes folks are doing two or three jobs at one time and the response rate is not what it always has been. The level of service, as we call it, is going to continue to be strained or challenged. So I think it's notable for our community to be aware as we seek to be increasingly frugal as well as efficient and utilize every dollar we possibly can, as I'll show you, for the best interest of the organization, there are still some costs. And then the last column, the operating budget. Over the last six years, we have continued to reduce the departmental budgets across the organization. And I, this is another, we've hit the bottom of the opportunity like we have with the transfers to the capital budget. And I give a shout out to my senior cabinet for tackling this charge, this, this task with great support and as much optimism as you can have. When for the sixth year, you're looking into the budget and reducing and carefully analyzing what we are no longer going to do versus what we're going to keep and remain. And we're running out of opportunity without significantly impacting the services and the programs that we offer our kids in our schools every day. So I, in one respect, the great news is, is that we continue to look within to evaluate how we're using every dollar that we are entrusted for the best interest of the organization, the people, and the kids that we serve. If we go to the next slide, the other good news is, is how have we utilized, what has been the drive to utilize those dollars? And we have translated into those savings into some considerable compensation and benefit contributions for our workforce. We, Cindy opened with our priority of protecting our and sustaining our workforce. Well, these, this reflects our compensation history over the last five going into six years. And the board can see that we've made some significant total cumulative investments into our workforce over the last few years. This is strictly compensation. We'll take a look at our benefits contributions here in a moment. But you can see in 1920, that was somewhat of a banner year for the organization over the course of the last several years, where we made a $18 million investment in compensation for the, for our employees across the organization. If we take a look at the next slide, I know the board understands, but for the benefit of the viewing public and our employees, our health care plan, we are a self-insured health care plan organization. Our health care expenses, you'll see in a few moments, is the second largest expenditure of our budget as an organization, only second to salaries. So we spend a significant amount of dollars as an organization toward the contribution of our employees' benefits. And here, we're going to take a look at three slides that provide an overview of our health plan and a historical look of where we've been. We'll start with board contributions. Dating back to 2019, 20, that's the most, that's the first time in, over a period of time that the board had made some additional contributions other than our existing annual premium. At the very top line, you can see there is right around $47, $46 million. As we go into 2022, 23, that will grow to over $54 million. And that, in part, is last year, you remember, the board contributed about $4.5, $4.7 million annually to the health care plan. I have proposed, and we'll talk a little bit more later in today's presentation, an additional contribution of approximately $6.1 million. Those are annual recurring contributions to the health care plan for our employees. But also periodically, we have infused what is called, what we call one-time money or non-recurring dollars into the plan. And I know the board understands this, I'm, for the benefit of our viewing public and our employees and the community, we are required as a self-insured health plan institution to maintain 60, the equivalent of 60 days of expenditures in reserve. It really, I was corrected recently. It's really not a reserve because if for some reason the health, the self-insurance plan were to end, we're not expecting that to happen, no problem, that's why we're spending so much time on it. But the requirements, the statutes around being self-insured require those 60 days to ensure that you have adequate funds to pay expenditures that may come in after a plan expires. So, for example, we may not have received the hospital bills for employees who were in the hospital six weeks ago yet. So we need to have those reserves, which is in the amount of about $12 million that we must maintain to meet our requirements to the state to be a qualified self-insured health plan. So periodically, we've had to infuse some one-time dollars to bring our reserve or that 60 days of expenditure equivalent back to the levels that are required so that we remain in good standing with the state as a self-insured plan. So you can see that over the last three years, we either have or are planning to contribute, I believe that's around $15 or $16 million of one-time money to the health plan. Let me mention the employee participation decrease. Our employees also contribute to the health plan through their premiums. And last year, we saw one of the greater declines in participation in our health plan. Part of that is, is our workforce did decline. As the board knows, we have fewer employees, partly because of enrollments being down last year. But because there are less participants, yes, there are less or fewer expenses, but there's also less dollars coming in for those premiums. So the reduction you see there, the 1 million and then last year and then this year, the projected 1.5 million is the reduction in premium contributions from the reduction in participants in the plan. I will, I will note a good thing, I would suggest. The bottom percent of total premiums has grown from the board's contribution from 71% back in 2018, 19, to the projected this year of 75%. You'll see in a moment that the employees' premium contribution goes the other way. As the board contributes more dollars to the health plan or the benefits plan for employees, it reduces their contribution, keeping in balance the employee versus the employer contribution. So kudos to our board and the decisions that we've made as an organization. We are continuing, we are making increasing contributions to the health plan to balance that participation with employees. So if you take a look at the next page, this provides a summary of the employee contribution to the plan. And you can see that also the employee contribution will be growing a little bit over the next year or two. Last year, or January of 2021, we initiated a tiered plan design option for our employees, referenced as the Gold or Silver Plan. The Gold Plan did provide expanded access to health services across the district, but it did require increased premium contribution on part of the employee. And so you'll see that the employee rate increase in 2020, 21 of just under $1 million, that's the result of employees choosing that plan that had an increased premium cost and then the projection for this current year. Now you may ask, well, why was it so much, excuse me, why is it so much less last year than this year? Just as a reminder and for everybody, keep in mind that our health plan fiscal year and our district's budget fiscal year are staggered. So the plan's fiscal year runs January 1 to December 31. The district's fiscal year runs obviously July 1 to June 30. So when you see the premium contributions of $998,000 in 2021, that was from January to the end of our fiscal year as an organization, and then it picks up the full contributions the following year. And again, you can see the percent of total premium, it's going down a little bit for our employees as the board has made additional contributions. Kind of more, a greater portion of a contribution to the overall growing expenses of the health plan. If you turn the page one more time or next slide, the, the total overview provides a net income expenses. And this reconciles our contributions or revenue against the expenses. We are currently using a 6% growth of expenses, which is a little bit lower than our consultant would suggest. They, they are proposing a 6.8% growth projection. We have not been running at that rate as an organization, so we feel comfortable reducing that a little bit for our own projections. I will tell you that our consultant won't necessarily, they won't reduce the growth because it's their job to advise us to the best, you know, to the best of their ability. So they knew, use national trends, we understand that. But for our own internal considerations, we're looking at about a 6% growth. It is possible that our expenses don't reach that 6%. Pharmaceutical expenses, which run right in the neighborhood of about $10 million, $11 million of the overall expenses of the plan, that seems to be the highest rate of increase. Sometimes that's better, a little more than 9% growth from year over year. And then health plans or the health expenses, doctors, hospitals, and so on, that growth in expenses is in the, in the 4%, so it averages around 6, 6.8. So the board understands where that comes from. So you can see back in 2018, 19, that our net position was in the negative. So you can see back in 2018, 19, that our net position was in the negative. That's not a surprise. The board has been tackling with me the rising expenses of our health plan, and we were coming off of about six years where there were no premium increases and, and minimal board contributions to the plan. And so we've had to do some catch-up over the last couple of years, which is, which why we've had such significant infusions of both recurring and non-recurring dollars moving forward. But I'm pleased that we are beginning to hit ground zero, if you will, in this fiscal year. There is a but, but the expenses and the growth are continuing and a, a net zero, if you will, where we meet our reserve and we're covering our, our revenue is covering our expenses, is like, it's a blink of a moment in time. So we are, you'll see before the end of the, the presentation, that we have some significant health plan contribution requirements coming here in the next year to two years to keep up with the growth. Because we really should be funding for next year's growth now to stay ahead of it, not getting to ground zero for today and not having funds covering the growth in expenses for tomorrow, if that makes sense. But we're in a much better position today than we were three years ago with the health plan and want to do a shout out to Dr. Thedy and her staff and team who have over the last, I think, two years now, taken over the benefits responsibility of the district and, and working diligently to both evaluate our past and current practices, but then pursue best practices moving forward. So they're continuing to do that. With that, I, it might be appropriate, since I think we have plenty of time, to ask if the board has any questions related to the information I presented before Ms. Lysinski moves forward with more of the financial.
Any board members have any questions for the presentation up to this point? Mr. Susan?
Yeah, I just wanted, there was two things. You know, the IRS announced that the increase of flexible spending accounts, we can have those higher limits, and that's part of messaging when we come out. It wasn't inside the booklet when I reviewed it. I don't know if we're going to be messaging that to the, to our people, that they can increase those. It's a good opportunity, as many of you know, that the pre-tax savings for us and our district is tremendous, that 7 to 14% of that money that our people put aside, both for them, 7%, 7% for us, for FICA and BUDAS. So if we message the flexible spending account more, then, and the increased limits, we might be able to do that. And then I didn't, I just wanted to say, the Gold Plan, we had, we had talked before about having Health First come in and present in front of SEIAC about their savings. We did it two years ago, we had that meeting, they came in and promised that they could decrease our plan by 4 million, but we couldn't get them into procurement fast enough. So going forward, I would love to have Health First, and I've mentioned it to Dr. Thedy, come in and present on what they could reduce our plan costs to, to the SEIAC committee, just so that they could, you know what I mean, reduce that cost on that Gold Plan. And a lot of people don't know, but the Silver Plan has, you know, parishes up in your neck of the woods, but in my neck of the woods, Stewart Health is a phenomenal A hospital, who is, they're, they do a great job. So a lot of people have this misconception that Stewart Health used to be, it's used to be Wustoff, which used to be called Worstoff, let's face it, right? But they've turned that thing from a D hospital to an A hospital overnight. And the quality of care, the number one back doctor in the United States resides in our Melbourne Stewart Healthcare Hospital. But just some things to message that not only is it, we, we always talk about the cost of healthcare, but there's also the quality. And that's nothing against Health First, Health First is great hospitals, they have A hospitals too. But I did just want people to know that that Wustoff has now Stewart Health for the last three years, and they've done a good job of bringing it up. So don't be afraid to move to the Silver Plan because there's quality care in the Melbourne League, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. I'll, I'll add to that, and to your point, the flexible spending that we, we are evaluating that for our employees, it is a benefit to the employees. I know I use flexible spending for my own healthcare plan management, but also there is some, some slight cost savings to the district related to that as well. So we're exploring that. I'll ask Dr. Thedy to provide the board an update here in the next week or so on where we're at with the, with that option. And then, you know, we're, we're closely evaluating, we're just about 10 months into the utilization of the tiered plan system. And, and my friends in the back, Mr. Savage, if you're watching, you'll be pleased to, to hear me say, because we've had, he and I have had some conversations and, and Mr. Calucci as well, Mr. Savage is a union representative, he sits on SEIAC, evaluating what are the costs to the plan for, for individuals who are covered under the Gold Plan against the Silver Plan versus their premium contributions. And our, our early analysis is, is that although the premiums went up for the additional expanded access to services for the Gold Plan, there, it's not covering the increased cost of those services. So we're reevaluating all those things, we're looking at having conversations with our health providers to look at what are the options that we can leverage moving forward to the benefit of the plan. But Mr. Susan, we wholeheartedly agree, we balance against savings and plan access against quality of service and quality of access. That's important for our employees, and we want to make sure that we make good decisions, both fiscally, but even more importantly, to the quality of service we can provide our employees as a significant benefit to, to them throughout the organization. So we'll, we'll follow up on those things and provide the board an update here in the next, next week or two.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. One of the other things, when we look at claims data too, and I know you know this, is that a lot of times, a lot of our HR and finance officers throughout the state of Florida, they look at the first claims, right? So one of the things that my guy did was he looked at the first, how much are MRIs? How much is all this? Where's the cheapest place, right? But what we're finding, a lot of the savings throughout the state of Florida is, is not so much, that is a cost savings, but what some of the creative individuals that are billing us are doing, is that they're also, when you go in to get that MRI, they're also charging you for five other services. So the MRI might cost you 300 bucks, but you're also paying 1,500 on these other services. Or there's another way of follow-up care. You got to come in 10 times as opposed to five times, just those claims too. And I know you guys are looking at it, but those are, that's what some of the stuff's doing. And what, what is amazing to me, this is the most amazing thing about healthcare, physicians' pay has not increased in 15 years. Hasn't, they don't get paid more, but somehow our health benefits increase. So there's a squeeze between their services and what we receive on our end, that I wanted to take a look at. And that's nothing of our plan, but I'm just a little sideways. We're seeing increases of up to 14 to 22% across the state of Florida right now on fully insured and self insured plans, and it's out of control. So that's it.
Any other board members, Ms. Jenkins?
Yeah, I have a question. I just have a clarifying question on Slide 4, when you're talking about the compensation history. Under the BFT box of 2020 to 2021 school year, of course, we're mentioning the teacher salary increase to 46.5. I was just curious, at the bottom there with the cost of 12 million dollars, is that inclusive of that increase, or is that just speaking of our raise at one point?
I believe it's inclusive of the TSIA, I believe, teacher salary increase allocation. So, yes, thank you for, I meant to, I meant to make that clarification. So thank you, Mrs. Jenkins. Yes, it does include, that was just under, I believe, a 12 million dollar allocation to Brevard. So by and large, the vast majority of that compensation increase was in response to the state's allocation.
Okay. And then, kind of stemming off of Mr. Susan, but I think it's really important that we continue, and I know we are, but continue to focus on that employee education about how, as an employee, we can do things and take steps and efforts to save the plan money, which essentially will save ourselves money as employees. And so I really would love if we can really focus on educating our employees on access to telemedicine and how, how simple it is, and, and maybe, maybe we can give them kind of an idea of how much that actually saves our plan, as well as our well care centers as well. I know I use that telemedicine as much as I possibly physically can versus going into an urgent care, and I know that that's definitely a cost saving to our, to our plan. So, thank you.
So I was just going to jump in there as our SEIAC representative, that has been conversation a lot in our, in our SEIAC meetings. And also, I don't know if any of you were able to jump on to the wellness fair last week, and I'd love later on to find out when we get all the data, what was our, our participation in that. But I know that Cigna, one of the Cigna representatives did two hour-long, live, I watched them recorded, but live Zoom sessions where people could go through gold and silver, and she talked a lot about ways to save yourself money, whether it is telemedicine, using the clinics, using the preferred facilities for MRIs and things like that. So you are correct, and we need, we've had a lot of those conversations, but part of that was last week. And then I think they're going to be doing some more things along our open enrollment. So that is, definitely are along those, thinking along those lines.
If, if I may, I can't miss the opportunity to do a plug. Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins and Mrs. Campbell, also for serving on, on, as the board representative on SEIAC. You're absolutely right. Let me emphasize, this is Brevard Public Schools' self insured health plan. The board makes contributions, employees make contributions, it's our plan. If you are covered under the plan, you're helping, if you don't use the plan one year, you're helping contribute to employees who find themselves needing to use the plan and vice versa. That's how insurance works. We, we're a collective and we help each other have coverage and benefits we might not otherwise be able to have on our own. The cost, the projected cost of what's called a full service or full coverage plan is estimated to cost us more as an organization, 15 to 20 million dollars more a year. So we do it to save money, but we can save each other even more money when we proactively manage our health positively and ambitiously and so on. So, yes, preventative care, those annual checkups, early, early detection is critical not only to personal health, quality of life, standard of living, which is, that's paramount, that's what we want for our employees, but it also is a benefit to the plan and ultimately to your, not only to your, your health pocketbook, but your financial pocketbook. So as we all work hard to manage our personal health in a proactive, positive, beneficial way, we benefit ourselves, we benefit the plan. Personal testimonial in the last, I don't know, couple of months ago, I used telehealth. I was like, my wife reminded me, sweetheart, you don't have to go to the urgent care, just jump on. And I literally, by the time I did the text request, I was on a telehealth conversation with a doctor within 30 minutes. I received, he did the evaluation, talked through my symptoms, had an antibiotic within two hours. Never had to leave my home, didn't have to wait in line, and it cost me $0 as an individual covered on the health plan. It costs the health plan more than half what it would have cost me to go to a walk-in urgent care clinic. So absolutely right, telehealth is available, you can get on and talk with a, a medical official and, and I'll say within an hour just about. Mine was 30 minutes, it was super helpful, responsive, I had great care and, and so on. So just to, here's some of my own little personal HIPAA information, which I'm okay with, if it benefits everybody out there to know that that, that service that is available to all of our employees. So thanks for the plugs.
If I could, while we're on this topic really quickly, just given a quick update on some other SEIAC things. And these, these trends are, are serious, they are national, they are also local. When we talk about the big picture and you're talking about tens of millions of dollars, you know, some of these things aren't going to make as big of a dent, but there are some pretty significant dents that we've been able to make that are going forward with. I think we, the board was, is aware of Surgery Plus and Hinge Health and those initiatives. There were also some, there was also a specialty drug, which is a really big expense in our pharmacy spend, Savon, that was started in April for the few people that we have that have some really expensive drugs. And there's also coming, some things that we're looking at when it comes to, I can't remember that, because I don't think they've been initiated yet, but there's some things when it comes to diabetes, that Lockton is introducing to us for diabetes care, there'll be other cost savings. Every single one of these things, which I'm really proud of this, and you mentioned it, Dr. Mullins, is not only saving to the plan, it's saving for the employee. The Surgery Plus, the Hinge Health, all of those things, the tele, everything is, is cost savings both ways. So we're not done looking at those, and I've been pleased with, personally, just speaking for myself, with what Lockton's done to help steer SEIAC and staff to, towards some of those solutions that we haven't seen before. But all of those will help this bottom line as well, in addition to the bottom line of our, of our employees who would take advantage of them. Thank you.
One of the issues that we have is not so much, you know, cost savings on a plan makes up about 10% of what we really can do. And one of the things that is the most incredible way to decrease your cost on your healthcare spend is through education. Because you look at the participation rate on different plans throughout the state of Florida, and depending on how that communication goes to educate those members on the savings is how significantly you can reduce costs. Getting people to do their wellness check, getting people to be proactive about getting checkups prior to issues getting larger, getting people to increase their flexible spending account. You can send an average of three years of somebody's flexible spending account, and if you did that, you see participations come up. Our largest part that we can really do right now, I feel, is on the enrollment platform that we have. I know we're supposed to go out to bid or something for that, but this communications piece needs to be the key that we are missing to educate our people. It's a massive opportunity that we've been missing with the current platform that we've had. There's so much more out there that's available that we can take advantage of. There's 10 companies that are doing some amazing things. So I look forward to seeing a great enrollment platform and the great things that you guys are doing, Dr. Mullins. And thank you, Ms. Lysinski, for all the stuff you're doing. We really appreciate it. But I promise you, I won't talk anymore. This is the topic for now.
Your goodness, Mr. Susan, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I believe back to you all.
So one of the first things I wanted to talk about was House Bill 7045, School Choice, and that was signed by the governor in law effective 1 July. And I just wanted to kind of let you know what that means to us and how it impacts Brevard schools. So the first thing is more students are going to be eligible for family empowerment scholarships. 375% of the federal poverty level is 99,000 for a family of four. And it repeals the prior public attendance requirements. So what that does is for families that fall in, in these levels, they can put their, they can enroll their, their children into kindergarten now and will never, they would never impact or never go into the public, the public schools. And then also families that are currently enrolled in private schools, many can qualify, and then they can transfer their cost that they paid or part of their cost for the scholarship or for the tuition onto the taxpayer. So those are, you know, and again, when you, when you take a look at the, the law that passed or the bill that passed, it also authorized income level of scholarships to grow annually. So, you know, this year it's 99,000, next year it can grow and it can grow each year. So more and more families will be eligible for scholarships. They also, and also the number of scholarship, our scholarships are going to grow annually. So it's 1% of the state's enrollment is how much they'll increase the cap each year. And, you know, again, or another thing, the scholarship is now worth more, it equals nearly 100% of the public school FTE. So previously, the scholarships weren't worth as much as a student that's in brick and mortar because of all the fixed cost and all the additional cost. However, now the scholarships are about equal to an FTE. The next thing is the Gardner Scholarship, which is a non-FE The next thing is the Gardner Scholarship, which is a non-FEFP scholarship, is not funded within there right now, is going to roll in to our FEFP. And you'll see more on that in the next slide. And, and, you know, just to let everyone understand that it could be that most qualifying students may not be at the expense of the district because many families are already in private schools that would never have gone to a BPS school. And also all the Gardner scholarships are going to roll in and they're already scholarships with students within those. So is there any questions on this slide? Before I go further?
Just, so just to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. So basically in your last statement, what you're saying is that we will become a pass through for that.
Yes, we will be a pass through.
Thank you.
And it's a considerable amount of revenue that's projected. So one of the things we want to emphasize is that the district's budget may look like it's growing, but it is the inclusion of those dollars that are, will just now be, like we are with charter schools, where the pass through for their budgets, now it's going to include all those scholarships that was previously being managed by the state, but now it's being transferred to the, to the districts as a result of this new legislation.
Right. And, and the state did set aside, or they appropriated about 464 million to cover the scholarship growth and they have that appropriated. They plan on doing that this year and the next year as we transition. But I imagine that one of the things that we'll have to worry about in the out years is to make sure that we are doing good estimates because we don't want to have to pay, you know, additional money. So it's going to be, we're just going to have to watch it really close and make sure we understand how we project in the future because we need to make, as, as a pass through, we know that the, the private schools are going to get their money. So where is it going to come from? It's going to come from us. So we need to make sure that we're, we are doing good projections and making sure that we account for everything that we need to.
I do want to say something now. That's okay?
All right, ahead.
You know, Dr. Mullins, you and your staff and this board have done an amazing job with School Choice. We are a very pro-choice district. But the word "choice" has been taken by the people who don't really have as many choices in their schools. One of the things that I'm working on is, is that we, the public schools, have the most choices. We are the schools of choice. If you look at it, we love to have school of choice as far, part of the conversation, call them the schools of choices because they can choose to go there. But literally, the options that we have inside of our schools is the schools of choice between career and technical and sports and everything else that we do. We are the schools of choice. And I think one of the things we don't do enough of is take that banner and say, we are the schools of choice, like literally. And we don't ever allow that. We, we make this sound like we're not the schools of choice and that these are the schools of choice instead. But that's not true. We are. And you, I just wanted to take a second and say thank you to you, thank you to everybody. But this is something that's been bothering me lately is, is that we're not the schools of choice, like they are. And that's not good because we're all in this together, both the charters and us and the private schools, but we offer more choice. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. I will, everyone else? I'll, I'll just share one observation that I think is important to recognize, and that is with them increasing the value of these scholarships to nearly 100% of the public school FTE, I think that we need to acknowledge the difference in requirements that would perhaps not justify a full 100% of FTE going to those other schools. So we have different building code requirements than private schools. We have teacher minimum salary, we have certification requirements, we have accountability requirements, all of which impact our cost to provide services to a student that the private schools are not experiencing. And not, I, I don't say that to bash charter schools, but I think as a community, as a state, we need to be cognizant of those differences and advocate for recognition of those differences in the decisions that are being made at the state level. Because to, to think that 100% of those dollars are going for a different student experience, different accountability requirements is just concerning to me. So just putting that out there in the universe for everyone to consider.
Ms. Belfer can ask a question?
Yeah.
Just because we're on this, I don't want to kind of stray away from that, but I do have a question about, so House Bill 745, we're going to become the pass through. So does this increase the burden on our staff that is currently managing those scholarships, managing the charter schools and the private school allocations? Does this require us to hire more staff in order to manage those funds as they come in?
I think that's a very good question and I would say it is going to increase the workload for our staff. And, and also to make sure all of those scholarships as they're growing, we have staff that inputs all of those and matches to make sure, and they're working with the state to see which vouchers are in and which aren't. So it will be additional work, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And Misty, kind of just to like jump off of what you were talking about, it's a little bit deeper, but you know, somebody who's worked in ESE for a while, it's always been really frustrating for me because, you know, we have students that may be on an IEP, for instance, in the world of speech, and they can apply for a McKay Scholarship and use that to another school that doesn't even necessarily even have a speech language pathologist at that school. So there's a lot of things that the public isn't really aware of when it comes to these scholarship options, that those schools don't even have the burden of hiring a speech language pathologist, but yet the student can use that scholarship and take those funds to go to that school. And sometimes we actually provide that speech language pathologist to that school and we burden that cost of that IEP. So I think it's really important for the public to be aware of the burden that it does still place on us, even if we are just a pass through, there are costs that, that do come to us. So thank you.
As a follow-up to that question, I know for the charter school funding, we, we are allowed to, there's a percentage that we hang on to as to cover administrative costs. When it comes to the scholarship funds, is there a similar provision that, there's not? So we're cutting the checks now instead of the state cutting the checks, but we don't have any administrative, I don't remember what it's called.
Yeah, there is no, I'm sorry, there is no indirect that we get to keep from the scholarships like we do the charters, but we're also not cutting the checks.
Okay.
What actually happens is we have to report them to get the FTE for them and that's handled by Student Services.
Okay.
Much as Ms. Jenkins said. And so we have to report them so that we get funded for them, but then the state comes and reduces our funding in order to pay them directly.
So the work is the accounting for dollars and for bodies, but we're not taking on the, the actual administration of the money. So yeah, okay.
We don't take the administration of the money, we do take the administration of the children, getting them reported to the state.
Right.
Appropriately. And if we don't get them reported appropriately, we will still get that deduction.
Right.
From our revenue source, which is why it's very imperative that we get them all counted appropriately.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lesinski.
Okay. So I thought that was an important conversation as we move into membership and the way that I've created this slide. So what the state's going to look for this year and then the years out is they're going to look for public school totals. So it would be BPS and charter schools. Did they, did they meet their projections or not? And that'll depend on how we get funded. And then they're going to look at scholarships separately, at least for the, these next two years where they have that 446 million reserved to cover the increases for scholarships. So when you look at membership, you can see that, you know, BPS were a bit down from our projection and charter schools grew, but when you combine the two, you know, it's a positive. So the state isn't going to, well, hopefully, the state isn't going to do a proration on us. And then also the scholarships down there, you can see that they grew and that was a lot of the family empowerment vouchers that came through and it does not include the gardeners. So those numbers are going to increase as well. And Ms. Strickland was very astute when she was looking at this. You know, you got to remember that when we were doing membership and projections, we really thought, you know, we were on the mend. We thought, we didn't expect to be where we are right now. So, you know, we were maybe a little too optimistic. However, altogether, we are, you know, we won't get a proration from the state if this is the way the numbers turn out and, but we will have to fund the increases in the charter school. And then, so you can see the membership on, on the one side and then we converted it to the FTE. And again, this is a September 24th, second survey, date, certain date is October 15th. And so after October 15th, we're going to take a look and make sure, and then revise our numbers again. So this is our best estimate at the time. They're going to change October 15th and then we'll get, and we'll have a good idea what our third calc will be in January. So are there any questions on this slide?
I have a comment. So you've mentioned a couple of times the 464 million set aside by the state. I just want to clarify for the members of the board, if you don't recall or if you weren't following during the legislative session, that is not 464 million extra dollars that the legislature came up with to put towards education budget. Those were dollars, if I remember correctly, that were extra because we all lost enrollment. So that the enrollment, the students that we lost last year because of COVID that stayed home or, or delayed a year kindergarten, whatever, since this year, we were held harmless, right? But this year, if they went off our projected enrollment, right, there was, there was that basically it was left over, was not additional funding. So they decided, let's take that leftover dollars, which I'm very thankful they did not take that out of education budget and let's fund this out of what we already have. But that's what that is. So if the scholarship continues to grow, at some point, the legislature, I think this is where you were getting at, Ms. Lesinski, is going to have to add additional dollars to the education budget because there were plenty of people, as you've already mentioned, who were already, who will take advantage of these scholarships, and I'm not arguing for or against, but who will take advantage of these scholarships, who've never been in our schools and have never been funded in this way before. So eventually, we're going to get to the point when, when our enrollment comes back, because I feel positive over the next, next year, if we're going to continue to grow, our county's growing, we're going to get back at least to where we were, and we'll have the scholarships too, that the state's going to have to add education funding. And I'm not really sure that the gambling contract is going to cut it. So we'll see.
One thing I wanted to add to that is the, the state did appropriate for those funds, but it is not in the FEFP.
Right.
So they're holding it. And then as they find out what the enrollment increases are, and I probably should restate that, so if the districts grow this year, the state is going to cover that growth.
So we won't have to prorate all that. Right. Correct.
Right.
So they took those dollars out of the FEFP, put it in the reserve for scholarships and enrollment increases.
Right.
Right.
But it won't come back in unless they feel that they need it. So they're only going to bring as much into the FEFP as required when they see what district grew, what district didn't grow and the increases in scholarships.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? I have one, one, hopefully, click on Ms. Lesinski. We're showing that we're 424 down from projection just for BPS subtotal. But what is our, what is our actual enrollment looking like since start of school year? Are we, I know, obviously, we're, we're coming in under what we had projected, but are we seeing increases in enrollment since the beginning of the school year, decreases in enrollment?
Ms. Belfer, typically, we do grow as we get closer to October. That has not changed this year. We have been, we have been tracking membership every single week and I think it has ebbed and flowed a little bit. You know, there's been some little bumps, but we are still, I believe we are still growing. That's why we don't really get too caught up in what's happening. I, I think that's a really good number right now.
Right.
And I think when we do get to October 15th, we'll be in better shape than we are today or than we were on September 24th.
Thank you. And we're going to recalculate and provide the new estimates once we get those numbers. So this slide shows the FTE and so in the gray, that is actuals. And in 2021, you can see that's when we were held harmless. And what I, you know, we're, you can see it was 64.5 in 1920. What we had projected prior to the pandemic was 64.448. So, you know, when we were, the fortunate thing is the state held us harmless and they funded us for 64.448 or about $22.6 million in the hold harmless. However, this year, they are funding us based on our enrollment. So, you know, we need to continue to work on that and you'll see those in, in the next couple of slides. But I wanted to stress that when you look at growth, I think we should compare 1920 to 2122. And then you can see the growth and then you can also see the big jump in the scholarships, which would look like we're back, the enrollment is back to where we were. And I just want to caution that that could give the district a false picture of growth because the scholarships are increasing. And this is a slide that just kind of gives a picture of what that looks like and you can see the percent of education source. And again, with the blue, with the scholarships, there, there is likely the majority of those increases currently are students that will, would have never entered a BPS school. And then we, we talked about this a couple of times, the transfers out of the FEFP revenue. And just so you can see the magnitude of the funding that will transfer out, you can see we're estimating, you know, $73 million to transfer out. However, the EDR, including the scholarship and the Gardner scholarships that are going to roll in, it's about, they're, they're estimating $93 million that will transfer And then you can also see what our, our funding level is, what we will see and then what the actual district FEFP will be. So we just need to keep in our minds that, you know, it looks like we're increasing funding wise and we are getting quite a bit more funding, but it's all going to be transferred out and we're a pass through. Okay, so this slide is, if you remember, May 25th, we talked about where we thought we were going to be and I had said that we were projecting to be 16 million to the negative due to enrollment. And based on our calculations and the second calc, it looks now that we're 14.9 that we need to make up.
Ms. Lesinski, if I can make a, just another note, a highlight.
Sure.
On that slide, if you'll notice, the LCI or Local Funding Contribution went up considerably this year. Not completely surprising because we've seen property values go up and we've seen growth in building and so on. So that, that has considerably helped offset the loss of revenue as the result of declining enrollment. So what was a loss of $23 million in state revenue, we locally made up 8.2 of that. So that has been a considerable, you know, help in managing, you know, the circumstances of the last couple of years. So just wanted to, you know, kudos to our community for a community that's a desirable place to live and raise a fam- for a community that's a desirable place to live and raise a family and take advantage of our amazing full-choice school district opportunity. But also, it, it has helped buffer the potential revenue impact we were facing going into this year.
And to add to this slide, the emergency order funding, that's the hold harmless. So, and that shows you that they're no longer providing that additional funds. But again, you know, the hold harmless was amazing that the state did that. It's also, we're very fortunate that the state's gonna, going to pay for increased enrollment this year. So, you know, we have 14.9 million to make up, but I, I believe that we have, you know, a lot of game ahead of us. And we can tip away at this. You can see what we projected. On this slide, you can see the 14.9. And then, we projected that we would have classroom savings, which is the teachers that we didn't hire because of the reduced enrollment. And we were able to garner 8.9, our projected, 8.9 million. And our projected savings for this year is 4.7 million. Again, you know, these are projected. And then, we had to make up a little bit more for non-recurring savings, and you'll see that on the other slide. But we do have a plan to fill this enrollment gap. This is recurring money. We really should be funding recurring things with recurring dollars. However, this year, we are covering it with one-time funds. And as we go through the next couple of years, we're gonna tip away at the enrollment. And, you know, we'll see where we land, and we'll continue to monitor. You can see in May, the 25th, I told you what our must-pays were. And that hasn't, what, it, the FRS system, that hasn't changed. The minimum wage increase is something that's gonna continue to grow, and we need to watch because there also will be a compression issue. And then, we do have a charter school growth that we're gonna have to cover, that we saw on the previous slide. Going down to Bivard, must-pays, you can see the health insurance cost increase. And that's recurring dollars. And that is the funding that we're putting into the health plan. But again, it's at the expense of some reductions that Dr. Mullins went over earlier. And then, so when you go over to the recurring savings, you can see what we have. Dr. Mullins talked about many of these. And then, so there's some FTE reserve units. And then you can see that the recurring savings. And then, we were also relying on ESER funds for workforce stability. And again, that's one-time temporary dollars that we'll need to make sure that we work our way out of before the 24, 25 school year. And then, you can see right now that our total financial position for this year is .3 million right now. But I do believe that we're only gonna get better. We're anxious to see what October 15th looks like. And we're gonna just continue to work on these expenses and, you know, find any opportunity to get better. Now, the next slide, you can see the one-time savings and the one-time commitment. And, you know, we showed this slide on May 25th. And you can see that we estimated the savings. They estimated teacher allocation reduction lapse, salary lapse, some things that we earned from ESER, savings from FRS from the previous year, additional retiree laps from the previous year. And so you can see that non-recurring savings for 2021, for one-time dollars, was 34.9 million. And then, non-recurring savings because of ESER, which is a good thing, is healthcare reimbursement that we are going to submit. That's gonna be in the lump sum, and Dr. Sullivan will talk about that. And then, we also, you know, Dr. Mullins mentioned that the calendar, the healthcare runs on a calendar year versus a fiscal year. So with that 6.1, we will get half of that in non-recurring dollars that we can use. And then, we are expecting, you know, to have salary laps in 21, 22. And that would be a portion of what we think we'll be able to get at the end of the year. We do have a lot of positions that are vacant. But I do want to stress that we've cut so many reserves, and we've cut so many positions, that our, our lapse rate eventually is going to be reduced because, you know, that's, you know, we just, that's where we can find flexibility. But unfortunately, as we continue to cut our reserves in our positions, we also lose flexibility. So then you go down to the one-time commitments. And you can see that at the end of the year, every year, these are the things that we have to fund. And then you go down to the must-pay requirements. We talked about most of these in May. The things I want to highlight here are the VPK revenue shortfall. I believe that we can get reimbursed for that. I'm still taking a look at that. County cares, that still hasn't come through, but I believe it will. So we need to continue to work at that. And then HVAC hours, because of running the HVACs for, you know, 24 hours, you know, we, we had an increase in our electric. So those are three things that I believe that we can get that funding back into our Fund 100 account. And then finally, the emergent requirements. You can see the 8.9 that covers our enrollment gap, the healthcare infusions, and, and the list continues down. So the bottom line, the non-recurring dollars that we currently have, I think this picture will get much better, is .692. Are there any questions on this slide?
I just want, it went quick, so I just want to make sure I didn't miss it.
I'm sorry.
Did you, that's okay. Did you say that the Bivard after-school may be something that we can get reimbursed through the federal?
Oh.
Well, you said something about reimbursement in there.
Right. I, I believe the VPK revenue shortfall, that was due to decrease in students. And so that's something I want to take a look for, look at. It's normally funded, or it is funded with federal dollars. So I'm gonna take a look at that. The Bivard after-school, no, they've already received, or they're going to receive funding from the county, about $500,000, is that right, Karen?
I still don't think we've received that yet, but, but yeah, it's.
It's projected, but that will, that will help Bivard after-school get well.
We don't, just to address the 1.5 million that we're contributing to Bivard after-school. If you recall, that offsets, our Bivard after-school program is a revenue, is a enterprise program. But, and we budget 2.4 million annually from that program into the operating budget. But because enrollment was down, we didn't project getting the 2.4 million. So, or, so it was short by 1.5 million. So we're backfilling that with, with the one-time money. It gets, if I remember correctly, it gets sticky when you're talking about an ESER reimbursement for unreceived revenue versus expenses that are invoisable, if that makes sense.
So we, it's not, if, I was just thinking of the, what's the, employment stability, what's the right word?
Workforce.
Workforce stability. I know, we did, we did some of that during the shutdown. The district, I don't know if we used ESER dollars for that, but the district just chose to go ahead and use some of the savings that we had from not being open to continue to pay even our Bivard after-school employees. So I guess, so I'm, so if it were workforce stability, we could use ESER dollars. But if we're, if we're talking about beyond that, money that we're expecting to get back, that's, that's.
If our expenses would have exceeded the revenue, we could have written off that because those were trackable expenses. But this is actually revenue not captured above expenses. That make sense?
Right. But we still are looking at funding from the county for the Bivard after-school. Is that, that's just a, an initiative that they're doing for daycares or?
We did when, when we were paying the people last spring, there were some of them that were working, or we, or we added the number of workers in some sites. So there was some billable costs that we submitted to the county. They've continued to want more and more detailed paperwork. We're still waiting, but we anticipate getting that money.
Okay, thank you.
A second?
Thanks.
So I just want to clarify something that I'm interpreting here, and just make sure that I'm interpreting it correctly.
Sure.
And so, when it comes to our savings, and we're talking about salary laps, and we're talking about retirement, so, you know, I, I believe Dr. Mullins already addressed this, but I just want to make sure I'm interpreting it correctly on this slide here, that, you know, we're seeing nearly a $10 million savings because of the fact that we have vacancies in our district. Am I correct for, for interpreting it that way?
You mean the 11.2 or the salary lapse?
So we've got a 7.7. We've got a 2.5 in 2021, 22.
That's correct.
Okay. So I just want to re-highlight something that Dr. Mullins said earlier. You know, it's great that we have $10 million in savings, but it's something we really need to also pay attention to, how important that is putting a strain of the level of quality of services for our students and our community. And that, that is also a huge red flag that we need to be waving, that we've got 150 vacancies throughout the district. I don't, I'm not, I don't know where we stand with teachers right now, but I know recently, that was, that was something alarming that we had. So I just want the public to be aware. That is not a number that we should be super, super excited about, and definitely not rely on in the future. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Right. This slide just shows you the components of what the state uses to build our, our budget each year. And you can see the main three components. It includes the state, the top two is how they project their funding. And then, the tax and levy millage is the local funding. And again, these projections are EDR projections. But I'll go to the next slide. And what I really want people to understand is, we're not only looking at lessons learned from last year, we are also looking at ways innovate, to innovate the way we pull data. We are looking to track laps, enrollment, execution in a much simpler way so we can make sure that we catch things as they occur. And then, we are also taking a look at '21 and out to make sure that we are projecting what those costs will be, increased costs, that we have to fund. And so we will continue to revise these numbers as we get more information. And, so, are there any questions on this slide? Okay, this is our emergent requirements. And we talk about this quite a bit. The state mandated FRS. There is no indication that we will not continue to have to pay FRS. The state does not provide funds to cover the FRS. And then, we will have the minimum wage increase. And you can see that the minimum wage increase, you know, starts at $11, and then, in '25, '26, it'll be $15. And so, that is a, a great increase. And then you can see, '24, '25 is when the, the federal dollars end. And this is when we're getting a pretty big increase in requirements. And that doesn't include wage compression. So what we would hope for would be more additional recurring dollars in order to, you know, to stage these a little bit better and not have to fund these all at once, and to avoid the compression. So one of the things that we would hope in the, in the next couple of years is the state would increase our BAS, or BSA. Last year, it was around $50, $40, and this year, it was only $52. And with those kind of increases, those flat increases, we really don't get the discretionary dollars that we need just to cover the emergent requirements that we have. Then you can see the district operations, our utilities, those costs are going up. The cybersecurity, those are also costs that are increasing. Currently, in '21, in '22, there are some funds that ESER is covering. But when we get to '22 and out, right now, it looks like we'll have an increase in those funds. And then, again, the health plan that Dr. Mullins talked about earlier. You can see the increase in requirements.
Mr. Susan, did you want to share what we were discussing back here on RLE? I, I think it's not a bad thing for the public to be aware of.
Yeah, I think, I think it would go well just because of the fact that I'm like leaning over into your ear. But you do it eloquently, so why don't you just do it? Because I'll probably miss out some stuff. Like, I asked you for the advice, or you had the answer. So if you could go forward, that'd probably be better.
Sure. So back on the FEFP revenue summary, what Mr. Susan and I were discussing was the RLE. And I, I think the, the masses probably don't understand the difference between what occurs in the school district and what occurs in municipalities. So the state, and you all, you all are the experts, so correct me if I get it wrong. But for us, the state sets our millage rate. We have no choice in adjusting that. The state tells us exactly what it's going to be every year. And every year, for several years, they have rolled back our millage rate to, in essence, decrease the positive impact of property value increases. That is not the way that it happens for, like, the county or the municipalities. Is that correct? They set their own per their charter. So they choose their millage rate. The other thing that I think is important is that when we, as, as a homeowner in Bivard County, I pay my property taxes. When I, I live in City of Titusville, so when I pay my property taxes for City of Titusville, my dollars go directly to City of Titusville for them to allocate. For school districts, the property taxes that I, as a homeowner, pay, in essence, go to the state. The state reallocates those dollars to the district with adjustment. So not, we're not literally taking the dollars and sending them to the state. But the state is recalculating, if you will. So we're not, in Bivard County, we are not receiving 100% of the property taxes that are paid in Bivard County through, for example, the district cost differential, where they utilize a multiplier against the funds that we would have received to equalize funds across the state. Correct?
Okay, that, that is taken into account when they do the entire state-local budget pie.
Yeah.
So as far as adjusting the RLE, they really don't do that. That stays fluid throughout, that stays concrete throughout the year, I'm sorry, not fluid. But, and I haven't been in the accounting office in a number of years, but my recollection is that that money does come to us directly from the property appraiser's office. So the tax collector, the local tax collector's office. Because we get the majority of that money in December. So as you're paying your bills, they are receiving the money, and then they do revert it to us. So our local dollars stay local. They do not go up to the state. What the state will do is, they will adjust our total funding, which is the entire bucket. And so, so they're adjusting their portion of it, not ours. I hope that answers.
So if I can, can I expand a little bit for illustration? I'm gonna put my teacher cap on here. So the benefit of a system like we have in Florida, and I- and I don't want us to get, move past this too quickly, the benefit of our program is in many places in the United States, including some of the areas where I have lived, um, you know, we have this equity issue because if you live in a rich area, your schools are gonna get more funding because your property taxes are higher, whereas in the state of Florida, the FEFP is the great equalizer. So regardless of where you live, except for the, the district cost differential because of living in a higher cost of living area, you get a little bit more, in lower cost of living area, you get less, but, um, overall, it is, it is a more equitable distribution of funding, um, because if you live in, you know, the swanky areas in Broward, you're not getting really more per student than the people who are living in the poorest rural areas of our state. The downside of that is that a lot of our community thinks similar to what you're, where you're getting, that we live in an area that is growing, that has all these industries, that all these big companies paying taxes, and that's really not making a big difference to our bottom line when it comes to our operational budget. It, it helps when it comes to our capital budget, but it's really not helping. So I just wanted to add those two kind of extra shades, because it, there is, there is a, uh, some pretty big positives to the FEFP, but then the downside is just the, the understanding of it. It's, it's not, you know, oh, look at all these homes, I've got a new neighborhoods going up all around me, why aren't you having more money? And that's not how we're.
Yeah, and, go ahead.
So where I get a little off, and maybe people need to understand this, is that we've consistently received less money on the district cost differential over the last five, six years. This year, according to our documentation, if you do the numbers, if you multiply the required local millage rate times the taxable school value, then move it over here to the district cost differential, we literally, according to the estimations, there's about $3 million that leaves our district in tax funds to go to the state to fund other. And just this kind of weird way of, of doing business is that if we have local people paying local taxes for our local schools, it would be nice for us to be able to take care of that. And those numbers that get adjusted, I understand that they're supposed to create some kind of equity, but that equity should be equalized based upon the state allocations and allow the states, the local governments, to kind of control their own taxable income. It's something that part of the Florida, um, lottery fund was looking at doing when they, you know, the Ponzi scheme that they came up with that, which is basically a shell game, where they take in money and then they put out money, right? That was supposed to help. And at some point, like, you know, I, I don't know, I know this is preaching to the choir, but it just sucks, and I don't think the public understands, that 3 million of their dollars leaves this county, that we are not allowed to increase our base stu-, um, our required local effort, that they set it and cities and municipalities, um, don't, that we are, it, it is, they don't understand that concept. You know what I mean? That's all. I'm, I'm done. Thank you for asking, answering those questions.
Well, and I, I think too, um, you know, I hear often in the public, our property values have gone up. Why do schools need more money? Because they should be getting more money because the property values have gone up. And they, they have. Admittedly, the state has been more gracious in the past couple of years with allowing us to realize growth, um, in, in, in new building and, and commercial building, but just because my property value goes up doesn't mean that schools are receiving more dollars as a result of that. In fact, the state has worked hard to keep that from happening, so. I apologize for us getting on the soapbox.
I want to say one more thing. The other thing that's, that's upsetting, and, and this is a big part of it, is that our, um, required local effort and how much we take in in taxes is not allowed to be capped on new construction, right? Or on, on identifiers, if you do not own your mo-, your own property, because if I own my own property and I live in it, that's a homestead exemption, but if I have 10 rental companies, that goes up. So what we hear from people is all the time, you're raising my rates, you're raising my taxes. Not actually. We're raising the taxes based on the income that, or based on them having rentals. Now here's where that becomes a larger systematic problem, is that we can't find affordable housing inside of our community, which is another serious issue in that we have all of these people that own these rentals that are skyrocketing, that are telling us that we're increasing their costs, but actually it's in line with what a lot of the other cities and municipalities have. So it's just this, this whole thing that's wrapped up that, you know, I just wanted to say.
Ms. Belfer, may I add something? Um, I just wanted to just add something off of that conversation, you know, everything that you guys, um, took the time to explain to the public, I really appreciate, but, um, that conversation is what supported, uh, nearly 20 counties over the past three years to come to the table and ask the voters themselves if they would support a millage increase, because it helps combat all of those issues that you guys are talking about, um, and tries to fix that problem here locally, so that, you know, as our property values increase, as our county incre-, um, continues to grow, you know, we kind of regain a little bit control, uh, over the money that's coming into schools. So, um, we, we didn't do that here, I'm not saying we did that here, but, um, it is something that went, went wild across the state and, and passed unanimously, I think, in every single county that put it on the ballot. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Anybody else? All right. Ms. Simpson.
Madam Chair, one thing I wanted to add, and I thought maybe that's where you were going, but when other, uh, government entities are able to increase their millage rates, they can do that, um, and they can do it in a way that would help with the compression with the minimum wage increases. So as they see that their, the minimum wage requirements are growing, they can increase those a bit in order to, uh, avoid the compression and start increasing the pay, um, earlier, and that will be another thing that is kind of competitive with the school district on, you know, bus drivers and, and different employees, because they'll be able to pay more, um, because they have control of the millage rate.
Excellent observation, Ms. Sinsensky. Thank you.
Okay, so, um, again, the utilities, um, we see that, you know, there's gonna be an increase over, uh, the next, uh, continue throughout, um, we'll have, uh, increases. And again, the cyber, the healthcare, these are just three that we identified, but we're gonna continue to watch trends and see, um, what we see growing i- in the out years and, um, make sure that we are planning for increases and are able to cover those increases with the revenues that we receive. And this slide is, uh, the federal timeline for, uh, one-time ESSER funds, and I like this slide only because it's so confusing with calendar year, school year, fiscal year, but we can see that the last of our, uh, federal funds is going to end, uh, school year '24, '25, um, or September 30th, 2024. And, um, so, again, the state has, you know, held us harmless, they're covering our growth, um, we're receiving these federal funds. It's just an incredible time that we can do so much for our kids and invest, um, but we do need to remember, I think we need to scale up, but then we're gonna have to have a soft landing, um, when we get to '24, '25. Dr. Mullins, did you want to add something to that?
Yeah, well, just to acknowledge, we've talked a lot about ESSER funds, the federal funding, we've built it into some of the budget obligations that we have both this past year and moving forward, but we haven't provided a more detailed look at ESSER I, ESSER II, and what ARP ESSER may look like, but that's by design. Actually, Dr. Sullivan, who oversees the management of those federal dollars, is making a presentation to the, for the board this evening at the board meeting and for the public, intentionally because, you know, this is into the, into the weeds of the budget, she's gonna provide information both looking back and looking forward for our community, for the board. I know the board has remained very engaged with the utilization of the funds we've been, that we've received so far. So I don't want to brush over the ESSER dollars and funds that we've utilized, we've given just a glimpse of that. Dr. Sullivan and her staff will provide a little bit more detailed look at it this evening. Uh, and then also, what are we hearing and what does the ARP ESSER allocation look like? Uh, I will, for the board and for the public, uh, we did confirm that the state did submit their application to the federal government for ARP ESSER III last week. It was actually due June 7th, so a little late, but better late than never, and, uh, so, uh, that process is, is, we're at the state level, has begun, and, uh, we're awaiting to hear from the state. But that, again, Dr. Sullivan will go into that a little bit more detail this evening. That was intentional because we really wanted broader community awareness, engagement, understanding, and we typically see more public attending our board meetings, uh, virtually than our workshops, so that's why we, uh, put the ESSER discussion later this evening.
Um, if I could really quickly, Board FYI, tomorrow is the next meeting of the House, um, Subcommittee on Pre-K Education Appropriat-, I'm mixing up the words, but, you know, Appropriations Subcommittee for K-12 Education. Um, one of the things that was brought up in the September meeting was that districts weren't using that funding. I know I sent a letter yesterday to the whole Subcommittee and gave them, uh, an outline, a lot of information came from Dr. Sullivan. Here's actually, we didn't have that funding, we had access to that funding on July 1st, we didn't get the, the, uh, RFA until later in July, didn't get it, you know, the deadline was August the 12th, here's when we got disapproved and not approved and disapproved. So I'm assuming that each time they meet, they're gonna get an update, I think it's on the agenda of how much funding, so if you, I'll, you know, we can report back later, but they should be getting those numbers that we are spending it down, because I know we're spending it down, right? Um, that at the time of the last meeting, there was only a, a portion, I think about 25% of our, 24% of our academic acceleration bucket that had been spent, and that was because we use those dollars on summer school because we could cash flow that. So, um, just, it's really important to me and to all of us that that committee understands that we're using it, but, um, as many people need to understand that we're using it because it was put forward, that school districts don't need that money, they're not using it, but that is inaccurate, to say the least. So I'm gonna continue to communicate that as much as I can with the people, but we want to do it with the whole community, but it's definitely our legislators and that particular committee.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell, I appreciate that. I too reached out to a couple of the committee members and shared some information with them, and FSBA has also been compiling information from the districts to share with that committee. Um, so I, I think there's, you know, I, I think we're all sharing the same concern and, and feeling like we need to take the same action to clarify some information that was misrepresented at, at best, I would say. Um, one additional comment that I, I want to make, this while we're still talking about these federal funds, because I think it's important to keep in mind, I think it's easy to look at this and say, oh my goodness, look how many dollars are coming into the district, um, and it's absolutely a blessing for us to be able to address many, many things for our students, um, but I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that these are one-time dollars and, um, and cannot be used on many of the recurring challenges that we are experiencing as a district, like the wage compression, like FRS increases, um, these, these dollars can't be used to address any of those. And so I just want to make sure that everyone understands that, you know, the reason that we continue to say that we have budgetary challenges is because there's a, a big difference between one-time restricted dollars that can only address specific issues, and then recurring dollars that can be utilized to address many of the financial challenges that we're experiencing in the district. And even, for example, our insurance, yes, we can reimburse from these funds to some extent our costs associated with COVID for our health insurance policy, but we can't utilize these dollars to fill the gap in our health insurance costs. And so, um, just, just want to make sure that we're looking at that from the right perspective and, and can adequately answer questions in that area. Anyone else? Ms. Campbell?
Since you just mentioned that, when we were talking about the health plan, did, did that take into account, I know we've talked about this at Cyac before, but did those dollars take into account any of that reimbursement, um, as it stands? I know we're not done being reimbursed for those costs, but.
Yes, the one-time infusions included approximately $4 million of reimbursement from federal funding to the health plan, uh, for expenses related to COVID.
And again, that is planned because that's a lump sum for us. Right. Um, so the challenges that we face, um, Madam Chair, I appreciate, um, your comments about, um, not using permanent dollars for temporary, um, or am I saying that wrong? Yeah, yeah, you can't use permanent dollars with temporary funds, so you can't make permanent decisions with temporary funds. That's very important because, um, we, we just don't have that flexibility. Um, the state really controls the revenue that we receive, so it's very, very hard to have the flexibility to use discretionary funds, um, and that's just something that, um, we need to be aware of as we go up, go through the next couple of years, because we don't want to meet a cliff in '24, '25. If we get used to funding everything with ESSER and then, and it stops, we need to have, make sure that we've already have a soft landing. So the challenges, again, slow enrollment recovery, um, the flat discretionary recurring growth that we have, uh, I mentioned before that our BSA was only increased by, uh, $40 last year and then $54 or $53 this year, and that really isn't, that doesn't even cover the FRS increases, so, um, so that's, that's a challenge. And also, as we talked before, the employee compression and compensation. Again, compensation is, uh, we need recurring dollars in order to provide compensation and, um, the rising cost of self-insured medical plan, so that will, we know that's gonna increase every year. If it's 6% or 6.8%, that, that funding is going to, or that, uh, cost is going to increase every year, and we do need to make sure that we have a soft landing, um, '24, '25, when the federal dollars expire. And that's the challenges.
Any board members have any additional follow-up comments, questions? Thank you. Mr. Susan says we've talked enough, he's ready to leave. But no, in, in all seriousness, thank you so very much for all of this information. Really important information for, for us to make sure that we understand, as well as for our community to have access to, to understand some of the intricacies of a very complicated budget. Ms. Campbell?
Um, I'm trying to keep him from eating lunch. Um, no, just really quickly, there was something that came up, um, I was going to share with you guys, I still intend to share some things that happened at our Board of Directors in the Board Report, uh, Board Direct, of Directors Meeting last week, I sent you guys an email last night, I don't know if you have a chance to read it, uh, on some action that was taken by the FSBA Board of Directors. Uh, Mr. Susan, there was, along with that was a resolution that was put forward, and, um, but we usually do resolutions near the beginning of the meeting, so I didn't know if we wanted to have some of that discussion, let me share with you guys about the letter and if we wanted, uh, Mr. Gibbs, I don't know if we're able to, to add that resolution to the meeting, or what would be the most prudent? It wasn't a yes or no question, so I can't say no.
You can't do anything right now, but if you wanted to add it tonight, it would just be pause, as determined by the chair.
Okay, well, I'm just wondering, um, would the board like me to share the information so you can, uh, make an informed decision? I'm not sure.
Can I help out? There's a resolution calling for the end of all of animosity and the things that individuals are doing, both protesting in front of people's houses and everything else. That came out from the FSBA to include also a letter from the FSBA that went to the NSA. They're two totally separate situations. The letter to the NSA was dealing specifically with them not following proper processes and everything else, that's separate. Us calling for an end to the gamesmanship and all the stuff is separate. So I thought it would be right to do that at the beginning, and then the other one at the end is all, that's it. And I, and I don't know if Ms. Campbell presented or whatever, but, uh, that, that, that helps, Mr. Gibbs, and thank you for not saying no.
So I, I would, I would suggest that we're up to speed on the issue. I don't know, Ms. McDougal and Ms. Jenkins, have you had an opportunity to review the information that was sent by Ms. Campbell?
I have, yes.
I have not.
Okay. Do you, Ms. Jenkins, would you be interested in Ms. Campbell filling us in, or do you want to just go ahead and put the resolution on the agenda for this evening and you can come to speed?
I mean, I'll catch up to speed before then.
Okay, so, um, I'm not hearing any opposition to adding that to the agenda for this evening. Mr. Gibbs, you're good with that as well?
Yep, you just need to, or cause it, so I, I'm assuming there's a time deadline associated with it?
Associated with what? Associated with what?
The resolution.
Nope. It'll be the first in the state of Florida to sign.
It's your agenda at this point, so if you want to add it for cause, it's your decision.
Okay, I'm fine. Dr. Mullins, you go with that?
Yep, I'll work with Ms. Escobar, make sure it's added for this evening.
Okay, super. Thank you. Anything else?
Can I, I would ask that we move, even the Board Report's usually at the end, my sharing of what happened, because the resolution is separate, but it is part. It came out of the meeting, it came out of the letter that was written, and the discussion around that, trying to balance all the issues, and so I would just ask that I could share that part of my Board Report before the resolution, if that is okay. I could do it during the shout-out time, or wherever you would like it to go, but I think that's important.
The other option I would suggest to Mr. Gibbs, if you disagree, let me know, but we have to vote on adoption of the resolution, correct? And so we would have a motion and a second, and open for discussion?
Right.
So I think it would be perfectly appropriate for when it opens for discussion, if you would like to share that information, if you're good with that?
I am very happy with that.
Okay. Good with that, Mr. Gibbs? All right. Anything else? All right, there being no further business, this workshop is adjourned.